Order this meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District, Board of Trustees, in regular session on Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present: Casey Phelan, Marshall Kendrick, Nelda Sullivan, Joe Campos, Bela Gonzalez, and me, Kenny Fernandez. Board members absent: Crystal Davila. Let the records indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted accordance to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, we invite you to stand for the invocation and pledges. Our invocation will be given by Marshall Kendrick, and pledges by Casey Phelan.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for history. We thank you for your gracious care of it. After the last year of a successful year, we thank you for your forgiveness, for the light that you shine for us. Thank you for our staff, from top to bottom, that their concern is for our students, our community that supports this district so well. Thank you for the meeting tonight. As we go through this.
Show me the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. I have a little technical difficulty.
I don't think it's on.
Check, check, yeah, mine's not working either.
None of them are. And I think the microphone's dead. You know, this is my first regular-called meeting, so of course something's gonna go wrong. I think someone sabotaged this one. Hang with us just a second longer.
I can hear you.
Yep, it's gotta be recorded. It's gotta be recorded. Otherwise Joan's gonna be writing a lot of stuff. No.
Check, check. Microphone, check, 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 check.
This one is not.
I didn't think that mine was. Good.
You didn't, you didn't need it.
They all heard the gavel.
Yeah, we did hear the gavel. I did a wedding not too long ago, and I had the... Yeah, you have the thing that comes around? Well, it was going in and out. Well, I thought that everybody could hear me, and if I would've known that, I would've just taken it off and just set it louder, but nobody could hear me.
Okay. Okay, so we just need to talk.
It is recording. That's all that matters. Okay, that's fine, as long as it's recording. Okay. That's fine, I'll just be, I'll be loud enough. That's fine.
Just for those in the crowd, it is, it's recording right now. It's just not piping through our system. So we're just gonna talk really loud, and if at any time you can't hear what we're saying, just kinda raise your hand, and we'll talk loud, or we'll talk in our big teacher voices, then.
Or we have plenty of space on the front row.
Oh, true.
All right, so, public comment. According to BED Local, there are no public comments at this time. Public meeting discussion budget and proposed tax rate for 2025-2026, given by Dr. Tameka Alfred Stevens, CFO.
President Fernandez and board members, just wanna remind you guys, on June 4th, House Bill 2 was signed into law, introducing, of course, compensation increases for teachers and support staff, along with other, many other items within that House Bill 2. At last week's budget workshop, Dr. Alfred Stevens informed you that specific provisions of the bill are still undergoing some rulemaking processes. And so as a result, we still do not have all the necessary information to fully assess the implications of House Bill 2. So despite this uncertainty, we are legally required to adopt a budget before the start of the fiscal year. And so I just wanna remind you guys that our fiscal year, this year, begins July 1st. We changed that last year. So just wanna make you aware of that, and just let you know that TEA has acknowledged that school districts may need to amend their budgets accordingly. And that's our plan moving forward, is that we will have to come back in July and amend what we do in our budget, so that we have once all of the House Bill 2 changes are made, that we can finalize our board, give our board time to consider the best compensation option, and give us time to have all of those changes for House Bill 2 finalized. So this evening, we're presenting the same budget that we shared with you in a previous budget workshop. This version does not incorporate any of House Bill 2. Dr. Alfred Stevens, of course, is gonna dive in a little deeper. But we are confident that our final budget will have a reduced deficit, but it will also include additional compensation for all employees, based on the option that you guys approve as the board. So we will return to you in July with an updated budget that includes a reduced deficit and compensation adjustments for all employees. And so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Alfred Stevens, who's gonna provide that detail for you guys.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Can you all hear me? I have a tall teacher voice as well. Well, I think I should just take my seat, because the CFO and superintendent just spoke. That's what I think. But needless to say, good evening, President Fernandez, trustees, audience members. The goal of today's discussion is to present our proposed budget and proposed tax rate. We have to officially have a hearing, as required by law, so this presentation will take into consideration that requirement. And at the conclusion of this presentation, questions that the board may have or comments from the public can be adhered to. So with that being said, please keep in mind that the Board of Trustees is required to adopt three budgets on or before June 30th each year. And those three are the general fund budget, sometimes called the local fund assignment, the food services budget, and the debt services budget. So that's what we're going to be doing today. As we think about the budget planning process that the district has underwent over the last several months, we had to strategically identify what we were going to prioritize as it relates to our instructional and operational needs. In addition to reviewing our enrollment projections and forecasting our revenue, we redetermined that we needed to make some adjustments to our staffing, and also looked at how we could avoid some costs, mitigate some costs, and of course, utilize some grant funding sources to be able to support our needs in a different way. Also, from those budget planning conversations, the following considerations were built into the 25-26 budget that you will be considering tonight, is looking at our... ...placement. About 20... Based on where we are with enrollment, and absorbing those adjustments through attrition. We looked at our operational needs, and we were able to further reduce our expenditures, another approximately $2.8 million. And also, this budget that we are sharing with you tonight takes into consideration Hurricane Burrow and three disaster pennies that we're eligible for to help offset the costs as it relates to that particular storm that occurred. So as you can see here, the general fund that Dr. Lopez just mentioned a moment ago, the total revenue that we are forecasting for the upcoming year based on current law at this time, with total projected expenditures of $551,127,22. Now, this does reflect a deficit of about $29.6 million, based on the current law. But we do anticipate that that deficit will be reduced once we come back in July and have further conversations about our proposed budget amendment. Also, I want to highlight that at this time, as you already stated so eloquently, this proposed budget does not include any compensation increases. However, because of House Bill 2, the new law that has now passed, we will again be coming back in July to show a budget that is reflective of those requirements, and also taking into consideration compensation increases for all staff members. Also, the other two budgets that we are required to have in place prior to the start of the July 1st fiscal year is the food service budget. And you'll see here, we are projecting a balanced budget for child nutrition services, and our debt service, which allows us to pay our bond indebtedness. We are also projecting a balanced budget for that particular funding source as well. As far as the total proposed tax rate for the upcoming school year, we are forecasting a total tax rate of $1.1723. I'd just like to say $1.17 in layman's terms, right? But we need those decimals, cuz it helps to generate a little bit more money. So on the maintenance and operations side, you'll see that the proposed tax rate is .8323 cents, or 83 cents. And the interest and sinking fund, which directly correlates to our debt services fund, is 34 cents, or .3400. For, again, a total tax rate of $1.17. Okay? So at this time, I'm gonna pause and turn it back up.
I think you nailed it home last board meeting, and we've gotten a lot of good information here. So thank you.
Thank you. That satisfies the requirements of the law as it relates to hosting a public hearing to discuss the district's proposed tax rate and proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, would you just clarify, were there any requested comments from the public? Yeah, I think we have to entertain that, Mr. President.
I didn't see the hand, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mary, come over here to the microphone. Yeah, to one of the mics. It still is recording, even though you can't hear it. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so when you said, like, it took off 20 million, and 2.8 and 4 million, is that reflected in that deficit already, or is that...?
So to answer your question, yes, that is reflected in the deficit. But the 4 million wasn't taking off. The 4 million is revenue, so that's additional revenue. The 20 million was reducing expenditures, and the 2.8 million was reducing expenditures. And yes, that is already considered and a part of the proposed budget that's shared tonight.
So if you had not taken that off, it would've been like 50 million?
Over 50 million. That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience?
Okay.
Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to our policy update presentation by Sandra Garcia Hun, General Counsel.
Thank you, sir.
Do you, would you like the microphone?
No, I mean, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, okay.
I'll talk loud. Okay, so for your convenience, I have prepared a board book, and this is something that the General Counsel's office does. We have our, our print shop helps us put the board book together. I just wanted to go over, since we do have some new people, Dr. Lopez is new, and then we have a new board member, just the way the red lines and blue lines in the book, what they mean, and how that all goes, cuz it's a little confusing. So if you look on a table of contents, you'll see that we have five policies that we will be reviewing today. The policies are in the E-series, which is gonna be under the instruction tab. So all these are gonna be instruction-related. So we do have members of our curriculum team here, in case there's any questions, they'd be happy to answer. We've been working together on these policies. As you can see, the policy is identified, and then we have legal and local policies. These are all going to be local updates. The legal policies are presented to us by our TASB consultant, and they're labeled as legal. And the board does not make any changes to the legal, only the local policies. And then you'll see the title of the policy, and under the note, you're gonna see whether it's a revised policy or it's a brand-new policy. So in these policies, you'll see that we have four policies that are recommended for revision, and we have one brand-new policy under EIC, Academic Achievement and Class Ranking. Okay? So as you go through the policies, and I'm gonna go to the first one here, so you'll see what it looks like. You'll see that you have red lines and blue lines. The red lines denote any policy language that is struck. So we're asking that that information be removed. The blue will indicate any new information that has been added. And then you'll see the comment box, and that'll tell you who presented the recommended change. So on this particular policy, all changes were recommended by TASB. So if you're looking on your book, we're gonna be looking on page 6. So as we go through this policy, this policy is dealing with the gifted and talented student programs. And as you're looking at this policy under screening and identification process, there's been some changes where it is being recommended, new language added, that the district shall schedule a gifted and talented program awareness session for parents. And this would be something that would be provided for parents of a student that has been identified as someone who would be able to be in the gifted and talented program. And so the purpose of the meeting is to make sure they understand what the procedures are, the screening procedures, and also that they understand the services of the program. And as you can see, as we look further under the selection section, these are administrative code changes, and that's why the policy has been updated, just to comply with any new changes in the administrative code. And it looks throughout the policy that they've changed the word "selection" to "placement." So instead of calling it a "selection committee," they're now calling it a "placement committee." You'll see that also on page 8. Again, you'll see that change there. As we go further under the section "exit provisions," you'll see that there has been some changes here. And what this section deals with is if a student is not meeting, if a student is not meeting the student's educational need by being in this program, then the committee will meet with the parent and the committee member to determine whether it's in the student's best interest to continue the program, or whether the student should be recommended for exit from the program. And if you look under "appeals," you'll see that there's an opportunity... If there's a decision made by the committee, the parent would have an opportunity to appeal that. And it'll give us a citation under FNG Local, which is the policy where parents can file appeals and grievances. So the bigger change you'll see under "funding," this was a section that would need the district to develop a regulation. And this language indicates that the district needs to develop a regulation where they can ensure that all funds, 100% of state funds allocated for the gifted and talented program must be used to enhance the program. And then there needs to be a method where the expenditures are tracked. So this is something where we would need a regulation after the policy is approved. And I have talked with our curriculum team, so they're aware of that, so that we can work on making that change. Now, as we move on to our next policy, EI Local, this is a TASB-recommended change. It's a very simple change. They're basically changing the phrase "combine grade with average of." And if you look at the policy under "partial credit," the change reflects a change to the language that indicates when a student earns a passing grade in only half of a course. And you'll see the change. It used to be "combine grade," has been to change to "the average of both halves is lower than 70, the district shall award the student credit for the half with the passing grade." So that is just a change that was recommended by TASB. EI Local. This policy deals with administrative changes to academic achievement, and also the standards that relate to promotion and the requirements regarding report cards and progress reports. And if you'll see here, this is a recommended changes that were made by administration. So part of updating our E-series was to make sure that we went back to make sure we were compliant with legal requirements, and also that the changes align with our current practices. So there are gonna be some changes in this area, making sure that we align with the practice that we have. The changes primarily are gonna be to clarify district practice, clarify requirements that establish instructional objectives, and address skills needed for successful performance in the next grade or the next course in a sequence of courses. So you'll see here, the first section under "relation to essential knowledge and skills," this is just really a... It's more of a basic change to align with the language that the district uses. Not much of a change there. If you go down to the guidelines for grading, you'll see that there is some additional language that's been added, where the district will permit a student who meets a criteria detailed in the grading guidelines a reasonable opportunity to redo an assignment or retake a test for which the student received a failing grade. Okay, so that is our practice, and that's been updated in this policy. And then we have... Part of it is to make sure that we're following our practice, but also for the community to know when report cards are being sent out, when progress reports are sent out. So under "progress reporting," you'll see that the district will issue report cards every nine weeks for students in pre-K through 6th grade. So I just wanna, if you see that, a change in your booklet, that's the reason. And then you'll see that for pre-K through 6, for students, they will have report cards every nine weeks, and for students in grades 7 through 12, every six weeks. So there is a little bit of a difference there. And so there may be, you may see where, in some places, the report cards are standard. However, this has been a practice that we've had, and it's been working for our district. So we've continued to utilize those report carding weeks so that we're aligning with our practice. You'll see under the next section, "progress reports." Again, progress reports for all students that are kinder through 6. You can expect a progress report on the third and sixth weeks of each nine-week grading period. And then we also have a provision for supplemental reports that may be issued at the teacher's discretion. And then going on to grades 7 through 12, the progress reports for all students will be after the third week of each six weeks. And again, supplemental reports as needed. The bigger change to this policy is gonna be under "academic dishonesty." And in that particular section, we're just updating our policy to indicate that if there's an instance of academic dishonesty, that there can be, the student is subject to a grade penalty as well as a disciplinary penalty. So there will be two things. However, the district does have some guidelines and regulations where we can establish what that grade penalty would look like. Not necessarily a zero, but it may be other appropriate grade penalties. So that's just, it's more would be an example of if a student engages in academic dishonesty, maybe makes 100 based on his actions, that the student would not be enriched by being allowed to keep that 100, but the district would work with them for an alternative grade and whatever appropriate penalty. So that is a change to what we've had. The next policy is probably gonna be the policy with the most changes. This is EI C Local. This is the new policy, the district that deals with academic achievement, retention, and promotion. Presently, the district does not have a local policy, although these provisions have been addressed and are continue to be addressed in our student handbook. So we do have a plan where we've been utilizing, as you'll see, as we go through the policy. We, in working with our TASB consultant, they did suggest that we go ahead and adopt a local policy. So we're bringing that forward today. And this is a brand-new policy. And you'll see here that there's not gonna be any red lines, cuz it's brand-new, or blue lines. But the policy is gonna deal primarily with how class rank is calculated, what weighted courses mean, how you determine who the valedictorian is, how local honors will be determined. And if you look under the calculation, you'll see that the class rank, the grades earned or counted, begin in grades 9 through 12. And then, as you're going through the calculations, you'll see some information about "class ranks shall not include semester grades from a course that is retaken after a passing grade has been earned, and the new grades shall not be recorded on the transcript." And then it talks about what the exclusions are in class calculations. And basically, the only exclusion that we have when we're calculating grades is we don't count any course for which a pass/fail grade is assigned. So that would be the only time that we're not counting a specific grade. Now, if you go into weighted, a weighted grade system, this is a system where the district, they do have some discretion on how they have their weighted grade system put together. But as you can see here, we have "district shall categorize weight-eligible courses as advanced, honors, and regular." So those are the three. We did have a basic category that we have since removed. So the new policy will only have those particular grades. And you'll see under the categories what each of those are defined as. And you'll also see the graded weight point average here, and how that's calculated. There's a section on transfer grades. Basically, "when a student transfers semester grades for courses that would be eligible to receive additional weight under the district's weighted system, the district shall assign additional weight to the grade based on the categories and grade-weight system used by the district only if an equivalent or similar course is offered to the students here." And then there's a section on local graduation honors. There's a section on valedictorian and salutatorian. This is an area that is, has been contested before. Not in our district that I'm aware of, but it is a highly contested area. So it's important that we designate what are the qualifications. For example, to be eligible for valedictorian or salutatorian, you have to have been consistently enrolled in the same district high school for four semesters immediately preceding graduation. That's one. That's one. Be graduating after exactly eight semesters of enrollment in high school and have completed a foundation program with a distinguished level of achievement. So that is how we are looking at the selection of our valedictorian and salutatorian. Again, this is very important that the community, students, parents are aware of how this will be calculated, how the class rank will be calculated. So I wanted to bring this forward because we are intending to make the change when the board approves it. We do anticipate some changes to this policy based on legislative items that are coming, being proposed. We don't know what the extent was going to be, but there is possible changes where they're going to have a uniform calculation instead of every district having discretion on what they count as the class rank calculation. So if that comes forward, we'll bring it forward. We anticipate TASB will have a model policy for that, that they'll help us with. So we may have, you may see this policy come up again.
While we're still on this one, though, as far as early college, actually going back to the legislature, I mean, how can you make a district as unique as Pasadena or districts throughout the state to uniform?
We'll be interested, I'm acting like that's working. We'll be interested in seeing what the rules come out on that. So we just don't know at this point, but we shall see.
Okay. And also, how are we weighting our early college and some other things?
Early college, is it considered advanced or honors, Becky? Advanced?
Depends on the course.
Okay.
Okay. So it would be weighted, if it's a regular course, it'd be weighted just as a regular class?
And they're identified that way correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, we did talk about, there is a weighted system that we use, and we do analyze each class separately to determine what the appropriate weight would be. So that's what Becky was referring to. So as those come out, we will look at each one. They might have a title or honors attached to it, but based on the type of the class, then we determine what the weight would be at that point.
I'm assuming the student would also have access to what the weight is going to be on a class before signing up for it?
Yes. Yes, they do have that. And I'm assuming that would still be in the handbook. And so, of course, once we get this approved, oops. I don't know how we got that, but, so our handbook will be updated to reflect that. So I think that our community is used to seeing everything in the handbook, so we'll have that and we'll be referencing the policy. And when this comes back up, I anticipate there may be some changes. They may be changes that we make in regulation and we may not have to bring it back for board approval, but certainly we would bring the regulation back to let you know how we're going to do that. We didn't talk about this, but I think another area that is important, and we have it in regulation, but we also have it in policy, when will the calculation be completed to determine what the class rank would be, which impacts valedictorian and salutatorian? So we do have that in policy. And so, so we, let me look, under local honors, for purposes of determining honors to be confirmed graduation, the district shall calculate class rank in accordance with policy and administrative regulations and will use grades available at the time of calculation at the end of the spring semester and within three days of the graduating deadline for seniors. So I think that's important for people to know that will be calculated. And then moving on to our last policy, E I E. This is a unique district policy, and we just, again, we're just updating it so that it aligns with our practice. And this is, provides information concerning academic achievement, retention, and promotion. And if you look through here, most of the changes are just going to be to align with our current practice here. We have, make sure that the first one, grades three to twelve, that the grades are on a scale of one hundred. So these are just changes to clean up this policy and, again, to inform the community of how the grades will be calculated for each particular grade. And you'll see this goes into a lot of detail about the campus intervention team, what they would do if the student is struggling. And then you'll see a couple of intervention plans here that we anticipate using in the blue. This is a unique policy that all changes are recommended by administration. Are there any questions?
A lot of work.
A lot of work. Thank you, Sandy. It was a lot of work, but I think we're in a good position because now we have that whole series updated. So, yes, and I had the, I told the team, make sure you're here, and they're there. We've worked together to make sure that we have some good policies. So I just asked that the board approve the policies and the new policy and the recommended policies as presented.
We do have a question, I believe.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Just a comment. I really do appreciate your work on this. It was very easy to go through and we appreciate your participation on it very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm glad that I was able to help because I know it can get a little confusing. Great, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to you and your team, and of course, Dr. Alfred Stevens and your team. We thank you all so much for the presentation and the public comment as well. Thank you. At this time, we're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076. We will reconvene as close to seven o'clock as possible. Thank you.
We're reconvening in open session at 7:01. And we will begin with special recognition. Mr. Casey Phelan. Thank you for your incredible leadership and dedication as school board president over the past two years. Your time, energy, and passion have truly made a lasting impact on me and this district. Under your guidance, our district has continued to move forward, always with a focus on students, staff, and community. You've built a legacy of caring, collaboration, and excellence that we deeply appreciate. As you continue your service as part of the Board of Seven and this team of eight, we look forward to the future with gratitude and optimism. As a token of appreciation for your service as board president for the past two years, we present this gavel as a symbol of your leadership direction in many ways, and you have helped shape this shared mission. We thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Well deserved. Well deserved. So I get the honor tonight to present the TASBO Purchasing Award of Merit for our finance team. So if we could go ahead and get those folks to come on up so that we can recognize you and make you stand awkwardly in front of everyone, I think that's the best thing now. So what we have coming up right now is, of course, Dr. Tamika Alfred, our Chief Financial Officer. Right here in the front, you are right up in the front. Derek Gillard, Executive Director of Business. Bethany Jordan, Executive Director of Finance. Maritza Davis, Director of Accounts Payable. Lori Pruitt, Director of Purchasing. Jennifer Smith, Accounting. And Valerie Lopez, Budget Coordinator. This team is an awesome team, and so I'm going to go through all of the awards that they received this year. So I want to share all of them with you. So Pasadena ISD continues to shine in its commitment to financial excellence and transparency. At the 2025 TASBO Conference, the district honored, was honored with the TASBO Award of Merit for purchasing operations for the eighth consecutive year. Recognizing the purchasing department's adherence to professional standards and acquiring goods and services, the business office received the TASBO Award of Excellence in Financial Management for the fifth year in a row, reflecting strong financial reporting aligned with rigorous state guidelines. Additionally, Pasadena ISD earned the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Offices for the 10th consecutive year, an honor awarded to only sixty districts across the state of Texas. This distinction highlights the district's high standards in financial reporting and its dedication to public accountability. To top it off, the budget department received the ASBO Meritus Budget Award for the 18th year, acknowledging Pasadena ISD's focus on transparent, high-quality budget planning and communication with both internal and external stakeholders. Altogether, these awards demonstrate our district's commitment to continuous improvement in responsible use of our public funds. So please, let's give this business department a round of applause as we share with them. We have four total awards for you guys. We want to get you pictured with all four of these awards. Congratulations. You guys rock. Nice try, Lori. Thank you, team. You guys are simply amazing. We appreciate you. Okay, our next special recognition we're super proud of, this is for Malillo Middle School, is being honored by Good Reason Houston for being a Houston school that inspires. We're proud to celebrate Malillo Middle School for being named a school that inspires by Good Reason Houston, a recognition that honors schools that are not only achieving excellence, but also showcasing what schools should be. Malillo stands as a shining example of what's possible when a school community dares to dream bigger. Through innovative practices, a deep commitment to student growth, and a culture that uplifts every learner, Malillo is helping to reshape the narrative of public education. This recognition is more than a title. It's a celebration of the people, the passion, and the purpose that make Malillo a place where inspiration lives and learning thrives. Good Reason Houston schools that inspire initiative highlight schools that educate and empower, elevate best practices, and celebrate excellence, and Malillo is leading the way. Unfortunately, the representative from Good Reason Houston could not be here this evening, but these were the words that she wanted to share, that Malillo Middle School is the 2025 school that inspires because it challenges everything we think we know about middle school. In a time when most schools double down on structure and control to manage adolescent chaos, Malillo leads with trust, creativity, and joy. And it's working. Students are outperforming peers across the state in both reading and math, not by tightening the reins, but by loosening them. Here, the academic excellence is built on a culture of ownership, collaboration, and authentic learning that feels anything but traditional. Where many middle schools follow this traditional playbook, Malillo Middle School is breaking all the rules and achieving outstanding results, scoring above the state and local average in both reading and star scores against all special populations. Congratulations, Malillo Middle School, and we're very proud of you. Okay, another exciting announcement for our, to honor someone here in our district. We would like to honor and recognize our principal finalist for the HEB Excellence in Education Award. The Pasadena Independent School District proudly recognizes our very own Lorena Carrasco, Principal of L.F. So Lorena was selected for, as an HEB Excellence in Education Principal Finalist for her exceptional leadership, and her recent honor as a statewide finalist for Principal of the Year is the prestigious HEB Excellence in Education Award. She was chosen as one of five elementary principals from the entire state of Texas for this honor. A passionate and inspiring servant leader, Principal Carrasco is committed to fostering student achievement, community engagement, and innovative teaching practices. Her commitment to community is evident through strong partnerships with local businesses to promote career awareness and real-world learning opportunities. These efforts have strengthened the bond between the schools, parents, and the broader community. Beyond her campus, Principal Carrasco serves as a member of the Pasadena ISD Strategic Planning Committee and is the Region Four Standing Chair for the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association. She is a mentor to future educators and a respected voice in shaping the future of education in Texas. We are proud and we congratulate Lorena on this well-deserved recognition, and we thank her for her unwavering dedication to the students and staff.
Congratulations. This moves us to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through six? All right, we have a motion by Ms. Sullivan, a second by Mr. Phelan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And this brings us to our personnel section.
Mr. President, I move that we approve addendum A through I of the board book. Second?
Second by Ms. Gonzalez, I'm sorry, motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Sullivan, would you please read the names?
It would be my pleasure. As I call your name, would you please stand? Mr. Robert Groth. Thank you, sir. Would you remain standing? Mr. Groth has been approved for the position of Counselor at Bondi Intermediate School for the 25-26 school year. Congratulations, sir. And do you have family with you? Thank you, sir. Mr. Carlos Guerrero. Congratulations, Mr. Guerrero. Mr. Guerrero has been approved for the position of Counselor at Beverly Hills Intermediate School for the 25-26 school year. And we hope you have family with you. Great, tell us about them. We understand. Congratulations, thank you. Ms. Kelly Skinner. Ms. Skinner has been approved for the position of Counselor at Pasadena High School for the 25-26 school year. And do you have family with you? And do we have Dr. Teresa Guerrero? There she is. Dr. Guerrero has been approved for the position of Speech Language Pathology for the Special Education Department for the 25-26 school year. And did you bring family with you?
I did.
And what about Brianna Sandburn? There she is. She's been approved for the position of Speech Language Pathology for the Special Education Department for 25-26 school year, but she's also served as an intern with the school district this year, and we're very appreciative. And do you have someone special with you tonight?
I do, very special.
Great.
And that's all I have.
Is Kimberly Phelps with us tonight? There she is. Ms. Phelps has been approved for the position of Assistant Principal at Cruz Elementary School for the 25-26 school year. And I know you have family with you.
I do. Thank you.
And what about Ruben Marichalar? Mr. Marichalar has been approved for the position of Principal at DeSavala Middle School for the 25-26 school year. And did you bring someone with you?
I did. I'd like to start by thanking the board.
And the next one, Dr. Alita Harold. Over there.
Get it right.
Dr. Harold has been with our district for a number of years, and we greatly appreciate her and love her. She's worked hard. And she's been approved for the position of Chief of Schools for the 25-26 school year. This is a new position within our district, and she's going to take the reins and do a great job. And do you have someone special with you tonight?
I don't know. And I'll go like thirty years.
We don't want to age you.
Thank you, Alita. And our next announcement is also a new position within our district, Jeremy Richardson. Mr. Richardson has been approved for the position of Chief of Staff for the 25-26 school year. Congratulations. And do you have someone special with you tonight?
I do.
Great.
Mr. for President. Very humbling experience. None of that, none of the what? Recognize my family at this time? Karen Richardson, who's also... There's a thing here, this is a family thing. My daughter, Kim Richardson. I do the pasting I see, my daughter. I do the pasting I see as well, my wife. So just so humble and so grateful. Is that Texas Roadhouse tonight? I'm glad to be here. I want to make sure that I mention this as well. Thank you all very much.
I just wanted to make one comment. Did you notice tonight that every person that was recognized and a promotion is a product of our school district? They're all promotions. It's a great place to grow at Pasadena ISD, and thank all of you for being here and helping us celebrate tonight. Now, we're going to have a regular board meeting, but if you'd like to get up and leave, you're welcome to.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm so proud. I really am.
Congratulations.
What about you? Oh, I thought I was family.
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm a...
Hi, Steve, how are you? Nice to see you.
See you, ma'am.
I got it, I got it.
It's how that works.
Yes.
Yes, he has.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue. Consideration and possible approval of the Maintenance Department reorganization and employee reclassification for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost savings of $4,410.
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Program Support and Achievement Department reorganization and employee reclassification for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost savings of $110,000.
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Technology Department reorganization and employee reclassification for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost savings of approximately $7,000.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the additional funding in the amount of $8,500,000 for the Pasadena ISD Medical Plan and Authorization for Superintendent or Designee to add additional funds to ensure that the Pasadena ISD Medical Plan ends in a fiscal year with a positive balance.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, and question by Ms. Gonzalez.
Just wondering what's changed, if there's anything specific that made that increase?
Dr. McCain, would you like to come up and talk with that? We also have representatives from Gallagher here as well. Is that microphone working on that side, or does she need to come to this side? She needs to come to this side. Okay.
Get your steps in. Yes, ma'am. So usually, because of our budget year ending sooner, usually we would bring this to you guys in July or August, August usually. And so, we're hoping that, you know, we've had some high claims come through, but we're hoping that we won't have to use this.
Thank you.
Sure.
And we have another question about Ms. Sullivan.
How much has the district contributed to this for this year?
Sir, are you asking how much have we in total? Is that for the amount of what we contribute every month for employee, or just this over amount, the overage amount?
Amount that the district has supplied.
So I don't have that exact amount. I don't know if someone, if Tamika, here she comes.
So the district's contribution per employee is $322 a month.
Okay, so is this amount, this eight million, is this all that the district has contributed for this year?
No, no, it's not. That is the amount that's forecasted, but we won't know until we actually close out the year and review the actual health fund to determine the degree to which there may be a deficit. So this is just forecasting based on initial projections, but as Dr. McCain was just alluding to, the fact that there are other rebates and credits that we are anticipating before we close out the year that could reduce this projected deficit, but we wanted to make certain that we brought the projected amount to you before we closed out the fiscal year, knowing that we are on a new fiscal year calendar.
So this is on top of what we contribute every month for the employees?
That's correct.
So if you can give us a grand total at the end, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. I'll keep you informed of how much it winds up at the end to make sure that you guys are aware so that we can have an accounting of it.
And what did we budget for at the beginning of the year for this?
We budgeted $5 million.
Okay.
$5 million as a deficit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of T tests, teacher appraisal calendar 2025-2026, and local procedures.
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And item seven and eight of this agenda is Certified Personnel for 2025-2026 School Year for Information Only, Support Personnel for 2025-2026 School Year for Information Only. We now move to our Educational Section, and this is going to be our Early College High School Spotlight presentation by Karen McCarley, Director of Counseling and College Readiness, and her team.
Looks like they get the front row.
Yes, they do.
I'm just doing the talking. They do all the work, I just represent. Okay. I'm going to read a little bit because I've got a time limit to stay within. Good evening, Dr. Lopez and Board of Trustees. We're very excited to be here tonight to spotlight the growth and the success of our early college high school program. Early college high schools are intended to allow students that are least likely to attend college a no-cost opportunity to receive both a high school diploma and either an associate's degree or at least 60 credit hours towards a bachelor's degree. To ensure that we enroll historically underrepresented students, we grant admission to students based on a weighted lottery that favors at-risk and economically disadvantaged applicants. Most early college programs in Texas are standalone models, similar to a magnet campus with only one location per district. Our TEA Coach says that Pasadena ISD is the best example of scaling and implementation of a school within a school model within the state. Ours is the most challenging model to implement, but by far the best experience for our students. Our model allows students to remain connected to their high school campus through participation in electives, the ability to choose a degree plan based on their interest, and it provides the support that is needed for those students to learn essential life skills such as persistence and self-advocacy. Enrollment has continued to grow since Pasadena High School enrolled the first 50 students in ECHS at their campus, and since 2017 when the program expanded to all of the comprehensive high schools. This fall, we're going to welcome 2,480 students to our early college high school campuses, I'm sorry. It's our largest enrollment to date, and our stretch goal is to reach the capacity of 2,500 students in the near future. The TEA Blueprint for Early College High School Campuses identifies benchmarks, artifacts, and outcomes-based measures in the areas of access, achievement, and attainment. These are the foundation for development and successful implementation of an exemplary early college high school program. Access. Access focuses on the students that are enrolled and represented in the early college high school program. To become designated, a campus must meet at least the first two indicators of at-risk and underrepresented students. This is a new position within our district. It's 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 a new position within our district. To become designated, a campus must meet at least the first two indicators of at-risk and economically disadvantaged, and then to become designated with distinction, a campus must meet two of the four total measures. Achievement. Achievement focuses on student academic success, including Algebra I and English II EOC scores, TSIA benchmark scores, graduation rate, and TSI college readiness benchmarks. A campus must meet at least three of these target measures to be considered for designation or distinction, and then you can see the threshold for distinction is higher. And finally, attainment. Attainment focuses on students meeting post-secondary milestones such as total college credits earned, college credits in ELA or math, and persistence from ninth grade to graduation. Similar to achievement, a campus must meet at least three of these target measures to be considered for designation or distinction, and then again, the threshold for distinction is higher. All of our campuses have met the requirements for both attainment and achievement. Three of our programs have met all of the targets to become designated with distinction. TEA's measurement of the standards is challenging for our school within a school model, and we have two campuses that are working very hard towards meeting that access standard. We have requested, however, that TEA reevaluate how these standards are measured for our programs that are using that school within a school model. But where are we now? The class of 2025 had 399 students graduate from San Jacinto College with their associate's degree two weeks before they graduated from high school. This is the highest associate's degree completion rate that we have ever had, about 88%. I'm sorry, 84%. So what might you ask happened to those other 77 students? Well, they did not walk away empty-handed. Eleven students will complete their final math course this summer, and they will earn their associate's degree in August. Three of our seniors completed the Texas Core Curriculum requirements, and they'll be able to transfer that entire core curriculum as a package to any university in the state of Texas. And then the remaining 63 students all graduated with 43 or more college hours. All of these students were successful, and all are beginning their next chapter having achieved these milestones with no college debt, all because of your dedication and support to this program. We have a few campus achievements that we would like to recognize now. Pasadena Early College graduated our 12th, I'm sorry, our 11th class. Our students have returned to PISD as counselors, diagnosticians, teachers, and nurses. We have alumni who are working worldwide, and we even have a student who is applying to be a NASA astronaut. We have been named a TEA demonstration site twice, and we make a difference every day for our students and their families. Board members, your dedication and work have impacted and reshaped our community in ways only visionary people like you could have imagined. Sam Rayburn Early College students have visited San Jacinto College and the University of Texas this year. They've participated in mental health awareness sessions and focused on building problem-solving skills and emotional intelligence. We hosted first graders from Sparks Elementary, and our students led them through activities to get them thinking about their future. Our students continue to participate at Sam Rayburn through activities like Rayburn's First Mariachi Band, FFA, JROTC, Fine Arts, Athletics, and other student organizations. We thank you for your continued support of our students, parents, and staff. South Houston Early College believes that commitment is not a feeling but an action, and we thank you for being all-in for our students and community. Eighty-eight percent of the ECHS class of 2025 earned associate's degrees, the most ever at South Houston Early College. Since our first graduating class in 2021, over 400 graduates have completed more than 22,000 college hours, with 334 students earning associate's degrees. J. Frank Doby Early College High School is a strong family of students who are on a mission to achieve big things in life. Because of your support, Doby Early College makes enduring impacts on the lives of students, their families, and our community. Pasadena Memorial Early College thanks you for your unwavering support. You are providing otherwise impossible opportunities for our students. Early College High School at San Jacinto College Central Campus graduated its fifth group of seniors representing Pasadena, Pasadena Memorial, and Sam Rayburn High Schools. The class of 2025 included eight Dell Scholars, two Terry Scholarship recipients, two Quest Bridge finalists, and a Stanley Scholarship recipient. Over the past five years, Early College High School at San Jac Central, over 900 students have been awarded an associate's degree before earning their high school diploma. We are so proud of our students' accomplishments and look forward to continued success, thanks to the support of our school board, Dr. Lopez, and all of Pasadena ISD. Early College High School at San Jacinto College South Campus had 88% of the graduating seniors earn an associate's degree. They are representing South Houston and Doby High Schools. Ninety percent of the 11th graders passed all of their college classes. We look forward to recognizing them next year, and we sincerely appreciate and thank our school board and Dr. Lopez for their unwavering support and commitment to our students and the early college high school program. I wanted to make sure and read that because that came directly from our team, and there is no way that we could do this without this team, so I would like to recognize all of the deans and counselors that are here tonight from Early College. If y'all stand up. Also, we could, one more thing. Also, we could not do this without the support of the high school campus leaders. I know a lot of them already left because they have new staff, um, but the high school campus leaders and teachers who all work very hard. We honor their commitment to implementation and this amazing opportunity for PISD students, so we look forward to sharing more success in the coming years. So finally, Dr. Lopez and Board of Trustees, we thank each of you for your ongoing support of ECHS and for making a difference in the lives of our students, their families, and our community. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we, yeah, we all wanna say thank you for what you've done, 'cause it's amazing work, and you have every right to be choked up, Karen, because it is, that's changing the lives of a lot of people in our community, so thank you, guys. While they're getting their picture made, we'll switch over our presenters and bring, go ahead and bring up, uh...
Art Del Barrio, Director of Communications. You know, actually, I wanna say this, is your, your program, well, our program, Early College, is actually directly impacting and influencing my family, as well as his family, uh, Mr. Campos, so we thank you all for that as well.
Y'all ready?
Take it away.
It's our Art Del Barrio.
Hey. Good evening, Board of Trustees, uh, Mr. Fernandez, Dr. Lopez, the rest of you. Y'all, I appreciate y'all allowing me to speak a little bit about my department, uh, just letting y'all know, I'm starting my 10th year this year with Pasadena ISD. It was a, a long time ago. I walked in one day with my little, uh, second grader, who is now a junior, but, uh, it's a, it's good to be here, and it's good to hear, just tell y'all a little bit, a little story about what we do in our department, 'cause a lot of people don't know, they think we just take pictures. So our, our department... Does this work? Uh, we have our own mission statement. Every year, we have a strategic planning session, and last year, we came up with a mission statement for our department, and what is it that we do? Well, we effectively communicate Pasadena ISD's core beliefs and values by identifying, establishing, and maintaining positive relationships throughout our district and community in order to uphold the district's public image. That's our job. Our job is to uphold the image of the district. Wrong way. Okay, our roles as PR practitioners, we adopt patterns of behavior to deal with what people believe our job should be. So it starts with a technician, a communication technician, that's as simple as somebody who takes a photo, somebody who, who does a little bit of graphic design, somebody who puts a video together. That's the technician side. Then we go into prescriber, then we go into communication facilitator, but the highest level of what we do is problem-solving process facilitator. When you look at the Platinum Award that we won several years back for the, uh, for the Texas Invitational, we had a problem that was given to us, which was McDonald's was thinking of, uh, of canceling their, uh, their sponsorship, and we had to prove to them that they didn't have to do so, and we did, did so with data and analytics, and ultimately saved that, that, uh, that sponsorship. But there's a lot more to what we do. Wrong way. It is, you know, something that we do, just a part of my role is, and the role of my team is media relations, you know? We get inquiries every single day from the media, and we respond to media requests with accurate information in a timely manner. We facilitate media coverage for our school districts. Somebody calls, or one of our schools wants coverage, it's our job to try to help get, get them out there, escort them on and off the campus, and make sure that, uh, that they're there for their purpose and nothing else. And we engage media outlets on social media, and we maintain and update an accurate contact tech list for our media, so we always, we stay in good contact, we build relationships with the media in the area. Now, we also handle social media and analytics. Now, social media and analytics is something that I'm very, very proud of. You see that 56,000 followers, uh, that we have on Facebook? When I got here, we had 16,963 followers, and now we're at 56,000-plus followers. This year alone, we did over 2,800 posts, and we had over 17 million impressions, which means after it's posted, that's how many people saw our posts. So that last number is a very, very important number, it's called your engagement rate. Now, the engagement rate is, uh, reactions, comments, um, links, links that have been clicked on, shares, photo views, et cetera, the interaction that that, that post gets, that, that, uh, that's a number that is measured through, uh, through social media as an engagement rate. Now, because of the high number of, of followers that we have, we can be considered influencers. Now, y'all heard that term a lot? An influencer, there's a lot of kids, adults, people out there get paid a lot of money, uh, just by having 50,000 followers, and we're considered a mid-tier influencer with the number of followers that we have. One more, we're macro, and that means we're, we're superior, but we're already on that third tier. Now, you go back to that engagement rate, if you look at, uh, above 5%, we were over 6%. The, uh, a stellar engagement rate, this is considered to be exceptional engagement, suggesting your content is reaching people and having significant impact according to social media market experts. Our engagement rate is off the charts. Our engagement rate is, is, uh, just showing that what we're putting out there is content people are looking at, and it's content-worthy. In the old days, it was newspapers. You had to buy an ad, you had to pay for an ad. There was, there was, there was an exchange of dollars. Social media allows us to do that for free, but it does have a dollar value. So our social media posts have a value, a mid-tier influencer with 56,000 followers and an engagement rate like ours could easily charge anywhere from $500 to $1,100 a post. So with our 2,835 posts at $500 on the low end, we bring $1.4 million of value to the district every year with what we do in our department. Now, on the high end, which, if you really look at our engagement rate, we're on the high end, if we were charging $1,100 per post to somebody, we bring over 3 mil, $3.1 million of value to Pasadena ISD. And I do it with a very small crew. So also in charge of crisis communication, and lord knows, Deanne, they made a huge video about all the things she had to handle while, uh, while she was superintendent, well...
We're not carrying that on. We're not, we're, we're just gonna stop that now, so we're not carrying that on.
Somebody that was, uh, that was, my team was right there, in line with her, handling Hurricane Harvey and the floods, COVID-19, the Deer Park fires, the tornado, the hurricanes, freezes, some, and some recent school shootings, all of that, that's where we step in, and we're taking care of the media, we're handling it, and we're making sure that the district still stays in a positive light. And, uh, just in, in February, I think we did, uh, an amazing job, and even all the way through, I think we've done an amazing job of, of handling and keeping the media in check, and making sure that we gather the facts and get them accurate information. We work together with superintendent, principals, and PD. Whenever anything happens, we set up a command center. Uh, there was even a bus accident one year for Memorial High School. On the way to graduation, we set up a command center at NRG. Graduation still had to go on, but we handled our business and we took care of it, and, and it's just what we do. So we've also gotten into video storytelling and reels. We've got Colton and Avery right now are running Comm Connection, they do a small recap of each month, and so that's in our studio, in our new studio that we have in our communication area. If you haven't been there yet, that's, that's what it looks like, and then, uh, we just hired, we recently hired, um, Avery Davis, and she, we got her out of Sam Houston, and she is just an expert at reels, and she's been knocking them out of the park, and they've been getting so much engagement, and so she'll, she'll go out there, and she comes back with, with these reels, and I'm just like, who did that? I did. Wow. She's doing some incredible work. So we, we're also in charge, and, or get involved in, we assist in major events and campaigns throughout the district, where the Communication Department assists with planning, budgeting, and logistics for events, marketing, graphic design, audiovisual, some setup and decoration, some execution, and some, uh, teardown, a lot of that is sometimes all of us, and sometimes it's collaborations with other departments, but we're in the midst and in the middle of all of it. Uh, just some of our annual events, our new teacher welcome, admin council, McDonald's Texas Invitational, prize parade, purse bingo, athletics hall of fame, vanguard, shining stars, service awards, teacher of the year, graduation and golf classic, those are our annual events, but that doesn't include the groundbreakings that get thrown at us and on TREs, dedication ceremonies, retirements, all of these things. Oh, did I kill the mic? Talking too fast? But we're involved in the middle of all of those things, and my department is, uh, just nonstop, if you go through there at any given time, everybody is always moving and doing something. So there's some examples, some of the things we do, uh, you know, a lot of that stuff is done in-house. We do not send off for, for printing anymore, and I'll get to that in a minute, but if you, if you take a look, all of, that 76th Annual Service Award sign, we did it in-house, all of the graphic design, we do in-house, so we've got, I've got a creative team that is just like no other, and I'll put them up against any team in the nation. So graphic design and branding. Now, graphic design, just this year alone, uh, there was recorded, this is what we have documented, 507 graphic design tasks, that's not including social media graphics, and 280 large-format print jobs. That's how much is going through the print shop, uh, through our graphic design, what we're doing in-house, things that would have been farmed out, and the district would have paid a lot of money for, we're doing them in-house and, and saving the district tons of money. To have a lot of this signage done would cost in the thousands, and we do it for, for pennies on the dollar because we're able to do it in-house. So graphic design continued. The, these are some of the things that Lori and our new, our new, and Bruce, who, um, passed away, and our new guy Bernard, these are some of the things they do, large format, logos, brochures, flyers, posters, event programs, event centerpieces, event photo booth backgrounds, invitations, booklets, t-shirt designs, door nameplates, banners, football schedules, calendars, organizational charts, big checks, stickers, yard signs, wraps, business cards, certificates, parking signs, acrylic signage, tickets, birthday thank you cards, large cutouts, branding, color codes, prepaid envelopes, digital podium graphics, monitor graphics, presentation templates, email signatures, districting logos with paired digital graphics. That's just a fraction of it, that is the short list. That's the Cliff Notes right there, what we do in our department, and this is daily. So we do marketing and outreach. So right now, we do outcome-based, data-driven enrollment campaigns, right now, they're working on the pre-K roundup, we, all of those, all of that signage, uh, was done in-house. We were having issues with a lot of the signs breaking because of the wind, and, uh, the team researched and found some mesh, uh, some mesh, um, banner material that the air will go through and not rip them, and now we're printing on those, and those will be put out there once again at a fraction of the cost. Those would have cost us easily five grand to do if we'd outsourced them, we did them for less than 500. So we're an award-winning communication team in 2019. Of course, we put the packet together for the superintendent to nominate y'all for the, uh... y'all for the honor board and y'all got selected, got to go to Dallas and were one of five honor boards selected. In 2021, we won the Teespring Platinum Award, which is the Super Bowl of, we're the only one, one school district that gets it each year. We got it and then the following year, we were a runner-up. We had put in the Many Hearts One Beat. We submitted that as a package of what the district did and we were, we were a runner-up. So twice in the last five years, we've been, we've got it and then we were contenders for the Platinum. And just so you know the perspective of it, they get about 800 submissions. So when you're the best of the best, we are the best of the best. Two others, professional achievement award. I got it and then this year, Bruce Stone got it. As y'all know, Bruce passed away in March, but before he passed away, we went and he told me that was the greatest achievement he had ever had. He was so glad that he got it. But much to say is Pasadena ISD has had two people win the top award for a professional in the last five years. We've had two people in there. Says a lot about our department and what we do. And then in all, we've brought home since 2016, over 200 star awards from Teespring, including Lori got the crystal star for the Thompson Brown breaking. She put the entire packet and the entire, she worked with the principal and with Alita Harrell and a lot of other people to get the packet and everything ready. And that's the year we actually came out with the tiles that you guys could have something to commemorate. And you know, that concept came, as y'all know, I was a school board member in Mission Texas many, many years ago, over 25 years ago. I was very, very young when I got elected to the board. And we built a lot of schools when I was on the, when I was on the board. And you know what I have to show for it? Maybe a brochure stuck in a drawer somewhere. And I wanted to make sure that y'all had something to commemorate, a conversation piece to have on the wall at home, anything of that nature. And that idea came from stemming from, you know, what, I got nothing to show for any of these groundbreakings I went to when I was a board member and I wanted to make sure y'all had something to have, y'all had something to display. So print shop services, this year alone, we've done over 540 copy print jobs and that may not sound like much, but when you're looking at 68 schools and all of the printing that goes for each of these schools, that is a ton of printing, 540 times 68. That's how much printing we actually do. We save a ton of money outsourcing. But when I got here, there was four AB Dick one-color duplicators. So those are all printing presses. Yeah, that's. And the amount of paper waste was a ton. We were spending, we have saved the district over $275,000 a year on paper since I've been here every year. That amounts to over $2 million in paper just because we switched from the old school press model to getting some copiers in there and our waste has gone to less than half a percent on paper. So we transitioned over to three black and white copiers, two color presses, and one large format printer. And by combining forces, the print shop with communication, our graphic designers are able to assist with pre-press by knowing exactly what equipment we're printing to. Saves us a lot of time, a lot of back and forth. We're able to ensure items are ready for press and we're able to absorb last-minute changes at a low cost. We're able to enhance projects on the communication, PR, and marketing side without going over budget. In fact, we've reduced the budget tremendously. And just so you know, the price of paper has gone up over 30% in the last five years and we're not had to ask for a budget increase because we are able to produce it with what we do in the print shop. And now we're also recently, we're giving the mailroom operations and we're in charge of servicing all the outgoing mail, receiving incoming mail and packages. And all new employee badges are printed in the mailroom. So we do daily mail sorting for the administration building and for campus delivery, get that sorted and then Bobby's team comes in and gets it to the campuses. So a lot of collaborations that we do and we work with all 68 schools and every single department in this district. And once again, we have a very, very small team. So thank you. Thank y'all for allowing us to present. Just glad to be here and I'm glad to be able to share all the things that we do because a lot of people don't know what we do back there. And that's just a fraction of what we do. That's a fraction of what we do. There's so much more that we do and I invite y'all anytime you want to come check out our new, our new facilities that y'all approved. You know, I was very involved in the design of the print shop and our communication area that includes a TV studio and the print shop in the large format area. And we built it for input-output and it is, we just had a meeting here last Wednesday, all the print shop directors from the entire Houston area, even as far as Waco came because they wanted to see what we had here and what our operation was like. And we're turning heads, we're turning heads around the state with what we do in print shop and they've come as far as San Antonio to look and see what we're doing.
Thank you, Art, very much for not only this presentation, but what you do on a daily basis. We really appreciate everything that you guys do.
Thank you so much, y'all. Have a great night.
All right. Consideration possible approval of the subscription with Texas State Library and Archive Commission for 2025, 2026 school year for approximately $13,482.39 based on the 2024 reported allotment, I'm sorry, enrollment.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the Texas Library Association and HEB Summer at the Library Grant Program Award in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with a big thank you to our grants department. Consideration possible approval for the 2025, 2026 interlocal agreement between Pasadena and Pembroke School District and Harris County Resource for children and adults to provide a youth service specialist for the summit at a cost of $44,654.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for the J. Frank Dobie High School Lariette Drill Team, Pasadena Memorial High School Sidekicks, and Pasadena Memorial Orchestra to travel to Orlando, Florida, March 4 through 8, 2026.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for the Pasadena Memorial Maverick Band students to travel to Orlando, Florida, April 25 through 29, 2026.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for two Sammer Abrams Safe School Ambassadors and two chaperones to attend the Eradicate Hate Global Summit in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania from September 14 to the 17, 2025.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for the mighty South Houston High School Marching Band to travel to perform at the Disney Performing Arts On Stage Parade in Orlando, Florida from April 24 through 27, 2026.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Rogelio Lopez to participate in the National Spanish Spelling Bee Competition, July 10 through the 13, 2025, in Albuquerque, New Mexico.
Motion.
Good.
Motion by, by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Everybody wanted in on this one. Great job. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Want to say how proud we are of this student. He represented us in our first ever Spanish Spelling Bee. He went to state this past week in El Paso. He placed third in the state, which got him an honor to go to nationals so we could have a national spelling bee, Spanish spelling bee winner. We're very proud of him, his coach at Marshall Kendrick and his principal and the whole team and our bilingual team, Rolando Marchand and Lindsay Lesniewski, all supported him. So we're just over the moon excited about this.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations and good luck. Student achievement for information only. This leads us to our policy section. Consideration and possible revision of EHBB Local Special Programs Gifted and Talented Students. Motion by Ms. Gonzalez.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible revision of EI Local Academic Achievement.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible revision of EIA Local Academic Achievement Grading Progress Reports to Parents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible addition of the EIC Local Academic Achievement Class Ranking.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible revision of EIE Local Academic Achievement Retention and Promotion.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to our financial section. Consideration and possible approval of the adoption of the 2025, 2026 budget. So motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the GASB 54 Fund Balance Resolution.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for May 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And consideration possible approval of budget amendments for June 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm sorry. Any opposed? Motion carries. And this brings us to the miscellaneous section. Public comment according to BEV Local related to topics not listed on the agenda. 30-minute allotment. This portion of public comment is limited to speakers who are addressing items not listed on the open session portion of the agenda for this meeting. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints about any individual student and/or employee should seek resolution through the district grievance process outlined in the applicable Pasadena ISD Board Policy, DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along these lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy of others and in doing so, please refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comment. Portion of the agenda titles may be used instead. This admonition goes for positive or negative remarks. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and Mr. Casey Phelan will be keeping time and indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. Speakers speaking tonight will be Dominic Torres, PMHS Gay-Straight Alliance. The topic will be on the Senate Bill 12 for the 89th Legislature of Texas. Your three minutes will start when you get to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I am one of many that have grown worried over Texas Senate Bill 12 as part of the 89th Legislature, and it is shortly summarized as the following, relating to parental rights in public education and to student clubs at public schools. Specifically, I'd like to increase the awareness of an amendment to subchapter D, Chapter 33 of the Education Code. It is written that a school district may not authorize or sponsor a student club based on sexual orientation or gender identity. At the time I prepared this all for you today, the bill has been sent to Governor Greg Abbott. My fellow peers and I are raising awareness on this part of Senate Bill 12 because we are officers of the Gay-Straight Alliance that has been established and has been recognized by administration at Pasadena Memorial High School. Of course, our group falls under the sexual orientation and gender identity specification written within the bill. Unfortunately, a social stigma surrounds GSA groups around Texas. The GSA at Pasadena Memorial does not engage in any sort of sexual discussion and we do not promote any agenda. Instead, we reflect on parts of history that were led by queer figures in our country. We come together as a safe space that is open to anyone that wants to join us and we discuss methods to be proper advocates as we prepare to graduate. We've had students within our club tell us that they greatly appreciate that we've created a safe space at our school. One of the general lessons of advocacy we've discussed is the importance of letting your voice be heard. Speaking here today is just one piece of evidence of the work we've accomplished as a student club. The passing of this bill would mean Pasadena Memorial's GSA faces a high chance of being shut down. We can't help but feel as though this decision is unfair to every part of not only our schools, but our entire district's population. We do not accuse or blame anyone in this room for making this decision, of course, but we believe that clubs for students should be able to recognize any background, including sexual orientation and gender identity, without facing discrimination from administration, other students, and any Texas law. As students, knowing our district's administration and boards support us would help maintain our established trust. Of course, we understand that a district school board alone cannot reverse this bill. Instead, we ask you to take some of your personal time to reflect on and recognize the impact of the changes this bill will make to the overall level of acceptance that students feel within the entire school district. Senate Bill 12 would also impact many students' mental and physical safety while at school as spaces where students previously felt secure would be removed. As a group of students that are a part of your school district, the Pasadena Memorial High School Gay-Straight Alliance would heavily appreciate your support as we attempt to spread awareness of Senate Bill 12 and as we plan to adapt to the changes that will be implemented by it if signed. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We now set the next regular meeting for Tuesday, July 22, 2025.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business to conduct at this time, we stand adjourned at 8:12 PM. Thank you.